Good evening. The September 22nd meeting of the Sayoville Board of Education is now called to order. Please rise for the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Genarone, roll call, please.
Here.
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 Can you please summarize executive session for us?
We have one item in a matter concerning attorney-client privilege.
Okay, thank you. Any correspondence of note?
No.
Okay. We need a motion to approve the minutes of previous meeting?
So moved.
Hey, Mr. Callahan.
Yes.
Mrs. Chuck Huiski.
Abstain, I wasn't present.
An abstention? Thank you. Mrs. Fernandez?
Yes.
Mrs. Maldonado?
Yes.
Mrs. Napolitano?
Yes.
Mrs. Pabon?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Do we need to do a separate for the separate meetings, or that's all-inclusive?
Was it together?
Because, do we need to do a separate approval, or is that all?
Yeah, I think if it's under the same.
Okay. Just want to be sure.
It's moving both of them.
Alrighty, now to the best part of the evening. We have our student council representatives, and we will start with Morgan.
Good evening, Board of Education members and administrators. My name is Morgan Koontz, SWMHS Student Council Board of Education representative. During the freshman orientation, students were able to receive their IDs and a T-shirt to start the year off at the high school. They were also given a tour of the school led by the student council and viewed a quick presentation led by Mr. Gluhuski. On the first day of school, students were welcomed after security with lollipops and a friendly quote to start the day off. As part of World Suicide Prevention Day last Tuesday, Ms. Sacks, the student assistance coordinator, and students in the Wellness Club organized an information table at the front entrance of the high school in the morning to promote resources for suicide prevention. Students were asked to create a new contact and save 988 in their phones for emergencies and were able to pick out a lollipop. Congratulations to Mrs. Santos and Mr. Pasva for being named Teachers of the Month for September. Every advanced placement student in their classes passed the AP exam last May. Moving on to sports, congratulations to football player Shawn Jackson, who was elected the big central football player of the week. Furthermore, the football team had a big win over Hillsboro on Friday, which improved their season record to 4-0. The girls volleyball team extended its season record to 5-1 with victories over Perth Amboy, Highland Park, and New Brunswick High Schools last week. The girls tennis team also had three consecutive match wins last week over Piscataway, North Brunswick, and Woodbridge High Schools. The girls and boys soccer teams are off to a great start, winning their first games of the season over Matutchen and Woodbridge High Schools. Congratulations to the following girls and boys cross-country runners who medaled during the Ocean County meet last Friday: Sophia Stanley, Morgan Koontz, Angelia Lapri, and Bryce White. Furthermore, we also congratulate the following runners for meddling at the Garrett Mountain Invitational on Saturday: Angelia Lapri, Sophia Stanley, and Damian Oliver. Thank you for your time and support.
Thank you, Morgan. I have questions.
Okay.
So first of all, congratulations on meddling in the first meet. What happened in the second one?
I was sick.
Oh.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Yes, Garrett.
Next one. Next one we're gonna get.
Yes.
And I'm gonna embarrass Morgan. I saw Morgan over the summer.
At the mall.
I'm at the mall, and my wife is in Sephora, so I'm sitting out, I'm like, one of the 10 guys sitting outside Sephora, and Morgan walks by and she goes, "Dr. Labby." I'm like, "Morgan?"
I like walked by at first, and I turned around, and I was like, I told my mom, I was like, "I think that's Dr. Labby." And I was like, "I have to say hi. I can't just walk by Dr. Labby and not say hi."
That was so nice. You made my day, honey. And thank you, Mom, too. That was awesome. You guys are the best.
You have a wonderful daughter.
Thanks.
She is amazing. And we missed you over the summer, but we're so happy that you're back with us.
Yes, I'm excited, too.
For your senior year.
Junior year.
Junior year. Oh, my gosh.
Not rushing her.
She carries herself like a senior. She is so mature.
Yes.
Awesome. So gonna treasure every moment we have with you.
Yes, I'm excited.
Excellent job, hon. Morgan, okay, and now for our newest addition from the middle school, Samantha Callahan.
Good evening, Board of Education members and administrators. My name is Samantha Callahan, Sayoville Middle School Student Council Board of Education representative. With the opening of the 2025-2026 school year, we have many events going on throughout Sayoville Middle School. SMS PTO is off and running. The first PTO meeting of the year was a success. The PTO welcomed the SMS staff back with lunch. They will be hosting a family fun night next month, so stay tuned. The student council is off to a strong start. They participated in the sixth grade orientation back in August. They held elections last week for the 2025-2026 Executive Board and Representatives. The first meeting will be held on Friday after school. Many student council members volunteered at Back-to-School Night assisting parents with the layout of the school. The student council will be participating in the Beautification Day on Monday, September 29th with the SMS PTO. We are looking forward to a successful school year. Community Service Club had their first meeting. They will be creating a chalk walk in October. The SMS course permission slips are being handed out at this time. If you were interested in joining, please return a permission slip to Mr. Palmer. Now, onto the Sayoville Middle School Fall Athletics, the Boys and Girls Middle School Cross Country Team. The Cross Country Team started this season on Thursday, September 18th against Piscataway. Although not victorious, the team had a lot of strong performances. The season continues today against Sandberg and Thursday against Churchill at Kennedy Park. We would like to welcome the first SMS Girls Volleyball Team. They're off to a 0-1 start, but it was a very close game. They have an away game today and first home game on Wednesday. The team hosted a car wash last weekend with the high school volleyball team to raise funds. Over 60 girls tried out and 18 made the team. Come out and support the SMS volleyball team. On September 18th, the Field Hockey Blue Team won their first game against Piscataway, 1-0. Coach Bacardi is very proud of all the hard work by all the girls and their hot start to the season. The 2025 Sayoville Girls Soccer Team kicked off their season at home on September 16th. While the opener ended in a tough loss, the team is energized and looking forward to the rest of the season. They currently have an active clothing fundraiser and hope to add more fundraise to support the team as the season goes on. Coach Rucini and Coach Tzamba are incredibly proud of the hard work and dedication these girls have shown over the past few weeks. Their next home game is Monday, September 29th at 4:00 p.m. versus Crossroads Middle School at the Sayoville Sports Complex. Come out and cheer them on. The Boys Middle School Soccer Teams have recently begun their seasons. The Boys Middle School Blue Team is currently 0-1, losing their first game in a hard-fought match against Maugur High School, I mean, Middle School. The Boys Middle School Great Team is excited for the first game this Wednesday at home against Piscataway. The Middle School Soccer Team Clothing Fundraiser ends this Friday, September 26th. Orders can be made online at BombersoccerMerchShop.com. Thank you very much for this opportunity to speak on behalf of the students at Sayoville Middle School.
Wow. Fantastic.
Thank you very much. Great job.
Great job, Sam.
Thank you.
So, Sam, let me ask you something. Looking ahead toward this great school year, what would be the one or two activities that you're looking toward to most?
The eighth grade trip, and then again to Six Flags, because more of my friends are like now in student council, so I'm excited to do more activities with them.
Very cool. And the voice sounds a lot like the voice of the person that was facilitating Back-to-School Night. Were you calling out the periods?
Yeah.
I'm telling you, she's talented, Mr. Callahan. You did a great job with that during Back-to-School Night, honey. Excellent job. And that's not, that's pretty nerve-wracking, too.
Yeah.
And you were wonderful.
Thank you.
Great job. I'm looking forward to your reports.
Are you now the voice of the morning announcements? Yeah.
Morgan and I used to do the morning announcements when I was over at middle school.
Yes.
We would tell corny jokes.
I guess I was telling her about the jokes that we made on the house.
Yeah.
I have a question. I have a question for you. We all know that I'm Morgan's favorite. Who is yours? BOE member. Who's your favorite BOE member?
Too early to talk to him. Too early, so. Tell me who gets it.
She just got here.
Yeah. Give me. I'll tell you next meeting.
I thought you were gonna say your dad. Thank you very much.
Great job, Sam.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, girls. Mom's taxi is leaving.
Listen, I don't know which one. Don't worry.
Have a great week. Okay, President's comments. I have a few tonight. It's been a very busy week. We did induct 15 new members into the Sayoville War Memorial High School Athletic Hall of Fame, and I am so excited to say that five of them were my former students, not the really old ones, the younger ones. Don't say anything. Sayoville Day, several of us were down there at the booth. It was a great day. The whole town was out, too many dogs for my liking, but that's okay. I also want to inform everybody that the Sayoville War Memorial High School Hall of Fame, which is separate from the Athletic Hall of Fame, will be celebrating its 20th year this year. So we are now taking applications. You can find them on the district website. And that's it for now. Mr. Smith?
Thank you.
Comments? Highlights?
Yep, well, echo that Sayoville Day was fantastic. We got to meet a lot of people, and it was a beautiful weather, and there was not enough dogs out there, in my opinion.
Oh, stop.
But congratulations to the students and staff of Sampson Upper Elementary School, who planted, cultivated, and harvested the school's strawberry patch. Those strawberries went on to win the first prize at the Middlesex County Fair earlier this season. Congratulations to Sayoville War Memorial High School student ceramic artist Karina Cardoso, Ava Wallenstein, and Jonathan Yahudoff, I'm sorry, Jonathan, if I slaughtered your last name, whose artwork was honored by the 19th, during the 19th Clay in Mind Closing Reception held at the Neuer's Art Garage in Atlantic City at the end of June. Jonathan's Venom piece placed fifth overall in the entire statewide competition. Congratulations to Sayoville War Memorial High School Marching Band, led by seniors Candace Concar, Dylan Mason, for earning a silver rating in their first competition of the year down in Brick Township. So, and I understand we have Dan Perrin on the board.
Yes, very proud. They did a great, amazing job. Looking forward to the season.
Congratulations to the following 15 Sayoville athletes, coaches, and teams who were inducted into the Sayoville War Memorial High School Athletic Hall of Fame. Cindy Allman, class of '82, Christian Campbell, class of '13, Reggie Carney, class of '68, James DeMild, class of '09, Jamie Garbowski, class of '93, John Getkowski, who coached from '49 to '69, Charles Kolakowski, who's class of '52, William Mandi, '61, Heather Mira, 2007, Thomas Michaels, the class of '59, David Milewski, class of 2010, Harry Nikilny, class of '93, Jessica Nicola, class of '06, John Wortley, who coached from '44 to '70, and the entire 2017 girls' high school basketball team. And that's our district highlights.
Thank you. I would also like to commend Paul Caruso, who was the director of the band. So, you know, the kids were the leaders, and the kids bring it all to, but if it wasn't for his dedication.
Oh, no. Yeah, no, Mr. Caruso does a great job with the band.
Mr. Caruso is amazing. Okay. Dr. Labby, any presentations, Mike?
No, Mrs. Bloom.
No presentations. Okay. Finance and infrastructure, Mr. Smith is going to take it for Mrs. Pabon, because she missed the meeting.
Yes.
She had.
Erin began the meeting by introducing Ken Genarone, our interim business administrator, who is current controller of the Monmouth Ocean Educational Services Commission. He'll be one of the two interim business administrators working with us while Erin is on her leave of absence. After that, Mr. Colemanberger provided an update on the facility's improvement referendum projects. In essence, everything except for Slover is done, with the exception of some punchless items. He reported that the transformers have been installed at Wilson in the middle school. Electrical at the middle school is 90% complete, only missing the cover for one panel and one breaker. However, we're waiting on dates from Cop Electric for when they'll be moving the solar disconnect to the other side of this building at Sampson to reconnect the solar system with the new switchgear that they needed to put in place. When this occurs, we'll need to shut off power there to the school. HVAC installation at Sampson in the middle school is nearly complete, except for a few punchless items. In addition, there's some ductwork, drop ceilings, and nonessential items to complete at the high school. Likewise, some exterior ductwork needs to be installed at Arlith. The Slover HVAC systems were delivered and installed. Additionally, two electric panels were replaced in the boiler room. And finally, Erin and Jimmy discussed the installation of exterior doors at the middle school in Slover, which were not part of any bids and are being purchased through a co-op bids with the MOESC. In other projects not related to the referendum, Erin explained that since we have bid out for the solar carport completion project at the high school, and both those bids have been denied because they were too high, we're in the process of negotiating with vendors who made some bids and some other vendors to see if we can get lower prices. Mr. Colemanberger has reported that the Eisenhower parking lot expansion is finished. Drove by that today. It looks fantastic, along with the middle school bathroom renovations in the main office. He also noted that the light poles in front of the high school that were knocked down are back up and providing great illumination to keep our students and staff safe. He also reported that the lowest estimate we've received for the Eisenhower student and staff bathroom renovations was $275,000, and you'll see that on the agenda for approval tonight. Finally, he reported that the esports lab in the high school media center is nearly finished. We're just waiting on some electric and air conditioning work to be done in there. And he also noted that they're still waiting for the greenhouse to be delivered for the high school. Erin concluded the meeting by informing the committee she was working with the auditors to wrap up our annual comprehensive fiscal report before she went on her leave of absence. And that is the finance committee report.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Okay, and now on to personnel. Mr. Callahan?
The Personnel Committee met earlier this evening to review the staffing updates, including the very low number of open, certificated, and non-certificated positions, current leaves of absence, and the recently filled positions that are gonna be listed on tonight's agenda. The committee also noted the smooth start to the school year, all credit to Dr. Agulies and his staff. The next personnel meeting will be held prior to the next board meeting on October 14th.
Thank you, Mr. Callahan. And now on to Middlesex County School Board Association. I just want to remind everybody that our next meeting is September 30th at the Pines in Edison, and you can register online. I did, however, have an issue with registering online. It always comes up, and when I hit sign in, nothing happened. So I had to call the number directly, and the call center took care of it for me. So if you have any trouble registering, do that. We would like to get as many board members as possible to attend, because this is the first one that we are having out at a venue. And school boards is getting a little sticky about having them out at venues, because it's a little costly. So we want to show a good turnout, so that we don't have, we had to guarantee a number, so that we don't have people not showing up for dinners that we paid for. So if you can make it on the 30th at the Pines, and if you absolutely can't get into register, just show up at the door. I know you, we'll let you in. Okay? Thank you. We will now open to public participation for agenda items only. Seeing none, we will close public. And, Dr. Labby, it's over to you.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Bloom. If I can get everyone's attention on finance and infrastructure first, I'm gonna jump down to number 25. We're asking you to approve a change order, M5, and it's for the ninth bid, and that was the bid with preferred mechanical for the HVAC upgrades at Slover, Arlith, and high school. Basically, the change order is for new ceiling installation, lighting, and electric at Slover, and for a cost of $61,201. And that is being deducted from the remaining allowance of $139,934.40. And of course, that's through the referendum. You can find more of that on page 5. Moving along to number 26, which you can also find naturally on page 5, we're asking you to award the bid for site development for the new transportation complex to GL Group Incorporated. They were the lowest responsible bidder for bids that were opened on September 12th, and the total base bid was $5,290,000. Numbers 28 and 29, which can also be found on page 5, we're asking you to approve the purchase of curriculum materials, as well as purchase services from Gateway Education Holdings in the amount of $20,824.65. And that's for environmental science, core curriculum materials, and online subscriptions for students. Likewise, we're asking you to approve purchases and curriculum materials and purchase services from McGraw-Hill, Alex, in the amount of $40,213.26 for the Inspire Chemistry Core Curriculum Materials and online subscriptions for students, as well as professional development for our chemistry teachers at the high school. Number 30, which you can find on page 6, we're asking you to approve a contract with CNM Door Controls. Mr. Smith just spoke about that. Those are the interior and exterior doors at both the middle school and the Slover school, and that's in the amount of $152,575. And of course, that was not part of any of the bids, as Mr. Smith said, but those funds are coming from the bond referendum. Number 31, which you can also find on page 6, we're asking you to approve a contract with Ascend Construction, with the bathroom construction at the Eisenhower Elementary School. Again, Mr. Smith spoke about that. That's that, it's a little bit less than $275,000, it's $274,550. A little, a couple of cents here, there. And also on page 6, number 32, we're asking you to approve a contract with Sal Electric for services related to running electrical power. To the new signs we're gonna purchase, the electrical signs, just like at the high school, well, we're gonna purchase electrical signs like that at the Arlith School, the Eisenhower School, and Sampson. This is just for the electrical that we're gonna run out to those signs, and we're gonna purchase those signs separately. And that's for $53,074. Are there any questions on those items, or anything else on finance and infrastructure?
I have a question, number 19. It's a bid for transportation. My question is, why are we not using our buses?
We're not using our buses because there are certain times during the day, for instance, if it's a high school game. Our kids have to leave here at 2:30. Our buses are still delivering some of our middle school students, and they still have to get to the elementary schools to pick up our elementary school students. So at different times, we just can't do that. Yep. Good question, no.
And the 31, is this only one bathroom?
Number 31?
Yeah, you just spoke.
No, this is more than one bathroom.
Okay.
And there are also staff bathrooms, too. So I believe it's two sets of boys' and girls' bathrooms and staff bathroom.
Okay.
Is Mr. Colemanberger here? Is that, was I correct? Huh, how about that? And that was on tape. Any other questions?
Dr. Labby, sorry, for number 32 regarding the electrical signs that are gonna be put at these elementary schools.
Yes.
How about, like, other elementary schools, Wilson, Truman, are they in forthcoming?
They're probably, they're budgeted for next year because of the high cost to run the electrical, plus signs. The signs itself are gonna be about $30,000 apiece, right? About $35,000 apiece. We just didn't have enough funds, but we wanted to get the signs for the schools that are right on main arteries. So, yeah, they're the most visible. But we haven't forgot about Truman, Slover, if they still want them. Some of the principals have communicated to us that they really don't want an electric sign, so we'll factor that in. But you can, you can bet on the fact that during budget time, you'll see that for the 26th, 27th school year.
Got it. Thank you.
Any others? Okay, so there was nothing on student achievement, Mrs. Grossman. Just kidding. So we'll move to governance. Number 2, which you can find on pages 16 and 17, we're asking you to approve multiple revised Board of Education bylaws, policies, and regulations for a second reading and, of course, adoption. Number 4, which you can also find on page 17, Ms. Burtzman, hard at work with our professional development committee to design and develop our 2025-2026 professional development, as well as mentoring plans. So we're asking you to approve those and the statement of assurance stating that we're gonna implement them with fidelity. Are there any questions on those items? I think there are a couple of other items on governance, so those or anything else on governance? Okay, hearing, seeing none. We do have one of those bittersweet moments where we have to say goodbye to some beloved longtime colleagues of ours and employees in the public school district. So we're asking you, number 1 on pages 17 and 18, to accept, graciously accept, the retirements of Kathleen Kinsiglia. She's a cafeteria worker, and that's effective October 1st. And then Sharon Thacitas, who is an administrator secretary at the high school in guidance. And Stanislav, I'm gonna, Stasha, I'm gonna, I'm not gonna say your name correctly. I'm gonna, Prashbleshki? Okay. And she's a bus driver for us, and she's a beloved bus driver for us, and that's effective January 1, 2026, for both of those. So Kathleen Kinsiglia is retiring after 30 years of dedicated service, leaving behind a legacy of hard work, kindness, and commitment. Through her career, she has been a reliable teammate, always willing to support her colleagues and the students of the district. Her leadership, knowledge, and positive spirit have made a lasting impact on everyone that she's worked with. While we will miss her daily presence, we are very excited to celebrate this new chapter in her life. Therefore, we wish Kathy all the best as she embarks on a well-deserved retirement filled with joy, relaxation, and, of course, new adventures. I had the privilege of getting to know Kathy while I was the interim principal at the high school back in 2019, and she really is just a joy, and she embodies everything that I just read to you about her. And I can't wish, you know, I can't thank her enough for all that she's done for the district, and I wish her the absolute best in this next, next chapter of her life. And then Stasha. I'm just gonna say Stasha, because that's how I know Stasha, and this one's a real special one for me, too, because I had, again, the privilege of working with Stasha during the pandemic. As you all know, or may not know, during the pandemic, when we had to close down completely, and that was the spring of 2020, we asked for anyone to volunteer so that we could go ahead and provide the Sayoville community with food and paper goods, the toilet paper, paper towels, because if you remember back then, you couldn't find that anywhere. So there were so many residents that were in need. We were driving around on buses, delivering the food and the paper products to whomever came out to get it. And Stasha was one of those volunteers that drove her bus every single day. And I gotta tell you, through one of the darkest periods of time that I've experienced, she brought absolute joy and light to all of us with her incredible sense of humor and just amazingly positive attitude. She's someone that I'm gonna miss terribly. She walks in a room, she lights it up. She just was that special and is that special. So, the Sayoville Transportation Department proudly recognizes Stasha on her retirement after more than 17 years of dedicated service. Throughout her career, Stasha has exemplified professionalism, reliability, and an unwavering commitment to the safety and well-being of her students. Her contributions have been an integral part of our mission to provide safe, dependable transportation to the Sayoville community. So therefore, on behalf of the Transportation Department and the entire district, we celebrate and thank Stasha for her commitment, care, and countless safe rides she provided to all of her students. Stasha's hard work, friendly spirit, and I underscore friendly spirit. Stasha's hard work, friendly spirit, and I underscore friendly spirit, have made a lasting impression on our community and many members of our staff, including me. We wish her the very best as she begins the next and most exciting chapter in her life, retirement. And then Sharon Thacitas. After 25 years of dedicated service to the Sayerville Public Schools, we sadly accept the retirement of a truly outstanding member of our team, Sharon Thacitas, Administrative Assistant. Sharon's journey with Sayerville is the story of versatility, dedication and extraordinary professionalism. She began her remarkable tenure in the Wilson School Library, automating the library and supporting students and colleagues as they pursued knowledge and learning. From there, she moved to the Transportation Department, mastering the computerized software which ensured that our buses ran safely and efficiently, a logistical backbone that kept our daily operations moving smoothly. Her next chapters carried her to the High School Guidance Office, where she became a trusted confinant and organized and advocated for countless students navigating important milestones. She then brought her talents to the Business Office, where I actually had the opportunity to get close to her, where she, her meticulous attention to detail, integrity and reliability helped her keep our financial and administrative operations on solid ground. And most recently, for her last leg of her Sayerville journey, she returned back to the High School Guidance Office, continuing to be that steady, capable and compassionate presence that everyone has relied upon through the many, many years. Sharon, she's without a doubt one of the most competent employees we have had the privilege of working with. Her professionalism, efficiency and composure under pressure set a standard that elevated our district. She possesses a rare ability to anticipate needs, resolve problems before they arise, and do so with warmth and genuine care for people. Whether coordinating new registrations, meticulously managing residency documentation and the endless testing rosters, serving as our go-to for each and every computerized system and program, or offering a reassuring word to students and staff, Sharon consistently demonstrated what it means to be an exceptional administrative professional. Beyond her many roles, Sharon has been a mentor to colleagues, a trusted resource for administrators like myself, teachers and students in a steadying force amid change. Her work ethic, punctuality, positive attitude have touched every corner of our school district. She has built lasting relationships, fostered teamwork and exemplified integrity in everything she does. As we bid Sharon farewell from the daily operations of Sayerville, we do so with immense gratitude and of course, a heavy heart. We thank her for the years of service, her countless hours behind the scenes and the quiet steadfast excellence that she has shaped our district in ways that will endure long after she closes this chapter. As Sharon begins this new chapter of her life, we hope it will be filled with the same joy, curiosity and well-deserved rest that she has shared with us. We hope that each day brings her happiness and the knowledge that she has made a lasting difference on everyone, particularly me. And I did, it was a privilege to work for a short period of time with Sharon in the Business Office. She's just, just an amazing person. And then, again, while I was the interim principal at the high school, I had the opportunity to spend a little bit more time with her there, too. Again, I'm just going to miss her dearly. And one of the things that I find most remarkable about her, I hope she doesn't mind me saying it, she's an artist. She creates dollhouses and miniature houses with such meticulous care, the furniture. She constructs herself in these houses. It's just amazing. An architect who is developing a model couldn't do a better job. She's that talented and that gifted, and I know that she's going to be working on that in this next chapter, and I know that she's going to continue to be a big success with that. So we're going to miss all those individuals terribly. Numbers 11 and 12, as well as 38 and 39, which you can find on pages 24 and 27, as well as the addendum, we're asking to, as always, hire new certified and non-certified staff for the 2025, 2026 school year. As Mr. Callahan said previously, Dr. Aguilis and Ms. Flanagan in our Human Resources Department have been working very, very hard to make sure that we're as fully staffed as possible. Numbers 13 and 14, as well as 40 and 41, which you can find on pages 27 and 28, and the addendum, we're also asking you to approve the transfer of certified and non-certified staff for this school year. And finally, number 15, which you can find on page 28, we're asking you to approve coaches with their stipends for the 25, 2026 school year. Are there any questions on personnel items? Okay, Mrs. Bloom, that concludes my report.
We need a motion.
To accept the superintendent's report.
So moved.
Second.
He's got his hand on my shoulder. He's working the dummy over here.
And I need to put my microphone on, too. Okay, so we need a motion. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion and we second it over here.
Thank you, wonderful. Okay, moving right along.
Callahan, Callahan and Smith.
We need a roll call.
Okay, Mr. Callahan.
Yes.
Ms. Chukweski.
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Ms. Maldonado.
Yes.
Ms. Nappatannan.
Yes.
Ms. Probone.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Mr. Smith.
Sorry, yes.
And Ms. Bloom.
Yes.
Okay, the motion's carried.
Okay. At this time, we will open to public for anything at all. I will remind you that our time is limited to 30 minutes. Each speaker gets three minutes. We ask you to identify yourself with your name and address. Please, you don't have to give your house number. If you're a Sayerville resident, we would like the street name. And anyone who wants to speak, please come forward.
Sayerville resident.
So, oh yes, Sayerville residents first. Anybody from Sayerville who wants to speak?
Good evening. You guys are going to get out early tonight. Steven Chudkowski, Road Street. Haven't been here for a couple of weeks, and it's good to see you guys all. Some meetings back, I had talked about the fact that taxes had gone up so much in Sayerville and also Policy 5756, how going door to door, speaking to people, I had to find one household that was in support of it. And I said that I think that you guys were out of touch with Sayerville residents, especially considering the background of Sayerville. I was born here, raised here, born in South Amboy Hospital, grew up, went to Sayerville High School, St. Stans, et cetera. So I seen the town. I didn't move here. I've lived here. Afterwards, the next meeting, Mr. Smith and Mrs. Bloom said that they hadn't talked to anyone and they didn't seem to be out of touch with Sayerville residents. And now I've been going door to door again for the new election, talking to people, and I have yet to find someone who is in support of 5756. Therefore, there has to be a disconnect. It can't be both ways. I would like to invite Mrs. Bloom, Mr. Smith, Mr. Callahan, being that you guys are going to run, to come out on a Saturday. We'll go together. It'll be fun. We'll go door to door. You guys get to explain the position of keeping information from parents and the person who's not necessarily here, but potentially the student that will be have to be protected. And I'd like to explain to them as well what I have been doing, that parents are being kept out of the loop. And then we'll do a survey. We'll write down names, we'll bring them back here, and we can use this towards the new election coming up. It's going to be the biggest issue for the election, not to mention, you guys just spoke about $5 million for a new transportation depot. Sayerville doesn't need bells and whistles with buses and with GPS on buses and solar panels. Sayerville needs teachers, and they need better paid teachers so that they can be taught. School buses don't teach children, and neither do solar panels. It's just costing us as taxpayers more and more money. So I'd just like to leave that thought, but it is open as an invitation for you guys. We go out each Saturday and love to get together and do that together.
Good evening. My name is Kim Lindling. I reside in Albin. I'm a former teacher and a mom. Tonight, I'm going to highlight some of Policy 5756. I hope you can hear me because last month, the speaker was off while I was speaking. When I went to sit down, the audience told me that no one heard me. I went up and I was told to sit down by the board. They heard me. After the meeting, I listened to the board meeting and my voice went silent while I was speaking. So I will be repeating the message from last month. As we all know, 5756 is not mandated, however, in the Sayerville Board of Education. The capital M is noted by Policy 5756. Teachers are not required to tell mom or dad that Sally wants to be called Sam. A doctor's note is not required. A gender transition plan is created when needed. And parental authorization is not required. An IEP for a student, the parent is needed for this plan to be implemented or changed to meet the needs of the student. The social worker can act in lieu of the parent when they are accepting of a gender identity change or when they're not. When did a teacher become qualified to become a medical provider? What education does a teacher have to diagnose dysphoria? Currently, California, there is a legislation that is called Family Preparedness Plan Act of 2025, which is also known as AB495. If this bill is passed, it would be supposed to caregiver to take a student without ID or parental knowledge or consent. How would you like to have this bill in New Jersey? What would you do? You could, your child could be picked up from school and you would have no clue. How does Policy 5756 sound to you now? We move on to the extent of which parental rights can be abolished, start with one policy at a time. Policies are added to structure, guidance, safety to schools and organizations. Why have Policy 5756 when there is a need? School boards have a number of policies in place already to protect and educate all students. In the Harbinger Daily, there was an article ran by the Alliance Freedom. 21 states, multiple school officials urged Supreme Court to review child's secret social transition case. This article depicts a New England school district enacted a gender identity policy that excludes parents from any knowledge or involvement in key decisions regarding their child care and violating parental rights. The parents have filed court papers to sue the Supreme Court of New England against the low school committee officials. The student's parents told the school about the depression and the gender confusion that was happening. Also, the parents hired a private counselor to help their child. Despite the parents having open communication with the school, the school ignored the parents. The school provided LGBT resources, sent private messages to the student, encouraged to use a gender identity bathroom. How is there clear communication lines with teacher parents when the school chooses when they do? This sad situation can happen here with Policy 5756. Thank you very much. Have a good night.
My name is Jennifer Woodruff, previous resident of Sayerville, now live in Morganville. Thank you for all you do and the time you dedicate to the town and the children. Over the past two years, I have voiced my objections to the 5756 transgender policy and like many others, have given many valid reasons why I am against it. From my observations, it seems that a few of the board members are listening, but mostly what has been said has fallen on deaf ears. There are even a couple of board members who have been verbally hostile and have tried to silence those speaking against this policy. I watched the memorial yesterday for Charlie Kirk. Charlie Kirk wasn't popular because he was a hit songwriter or a famous actor. No, Charlie was famous because he talked about the family unit and how important it was, purpose, and talked about truth. The young people today are craving truth. The media no longer reports the news. They give it to us with their slant. I don't care which side you are on, they deliver the news with an agenda in mind. We are being constantly fed news feeds on our phones and with incorrect information, lies. There are social media platforms enticing us, our children, grandchildren. There are paid influencers pushing products they know nothing about. There are algorithms targeting vulnerable children and indoctrinating them. We are being lied to left and right. As adults, we have a hard time discerning the truth. What is right and wrong? How can kids believe any one or anything? Children need guidance. Children need structure. Children need boundaries. Children need the truth. The 5756 transgender policy affirms something that is not true. It is based on feelings. Schools are supposed to be one place where kids can learn about facts and truth. So why are we confusing them with a policy that is deceptive and by referring to children by pronouns different from who they are? Let's not confuse the students anymore. Rescind Policy 5756. Let's have policies in the schools that are based upon truth. Is that too much to ask? Thank you.
Carolyn Mack, and I live in Old Bridge still. Well, I haven't heard any hate tonight. The speakers that we've heard, reasonable, logical. I love the offer that Steve Chudkowski put on the table. I think it's very fair, and he's right. When you say, when he says, nobody knows about this policy, and you say, in essence, you're lying, both can't be true, we know that. It's no secret that the six members on this board favor keeping the notorious trans policy 5756. Three of them are up for reelection and can easily be replaced on Election Day. The concerns that we've brought before this board for two years have been met with hostility and intimidation, as anyone can see. By watching, I invite anybody listening, or you, to watch again the May 7, 2024 board meeting, as just one example. Forward, forward to the public comments at the end, followed by the attacks from Dr. Labby and Ms. Pabon, in which we were told in no uncertain terms that nobody was listening to us, that we were lying, and to stop wasting your time. Ms. Pabon said, no one on the board would vote against this policy, her exact words. I think we should take her at her word. If you are a parent who opposes secret files and gender dysphoric boys using girls locker rooms and playing in girl's sports, replace these three board members who are up for reelection and vote column two. We have heard numerous times from Ms. Pabon that it was luck and nothing more that got three new board members elected last year. These three women have bravely stood against 5756 and taken a lot of abuse for it. They need three new board members who agree with them to rescind this policy, make it happen in Sayerville, just like in other school districts. Vote column two. I think by replacing the three incumbents, we will see the friendly spirit that we all want. I do think that, you know, yes, we disagree with you, but disagreement doesn't mean hate. We are not haters, and we don't appreciate when our words are misconstrued, as they have been here. I want to close with an example of some of the hostility that we've faced here. Following a recent school board meeting, I approached the board secretary to ask about an email that I had sent, in which I asked that it would be read to the board. So, but my letter was not acknowledged and it was not read. I approached her with a smile. I put my hand out and I introduced myself. She pulled back, refusing to even shake my hand. This is just one example of why parents do not want to come here.
Good evening, board members and all. I'm Kim Landa from Old Bridge. We have a family business in Sayerville on Washington Road. Is Policy 5756 a good or positive thing for the Sayerville schools, students, teachers and parents, especially if we are all trying to work together for the ultimate best of our children? As far as protecting transgender students, schools already had and have policies in place to protect. place to protect all students from harassment, intimidation, and bullying. And of course, we don't want any child to be harmed in those ways, obviously. Policy 5756 allows for a separate confidential file to be made for a student who wishes to be called by another name or pronoun, and parents do not have to be notified of this. Is this really appropriate for a school to be doing? Secrecy is just never a healthy thing for anyone, and certainly doesn't strengthen a parent-child bond or a teacher-parent relationship, nor a healthy student-teacher relationship. Wouldn't openness and honesty instead of secrets promote an all-around better atmosphere of security and trust for these precious children as well as for everyone? Please rescind Policy 5756. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Ron Mack. I'm still from Old Bridge. I heard at the beginning of the meeting, somebody said they're gonna do T-shirts for a team or something here. I think that's great. I'd like to recommend T-shirts also for free from a, I could get them from a local vendor, and they'd be free for the entire student body. And maybe they'd have some samples of their products for free, too. Here's the T-shirt here. It's Jack Daniels whiskey from Tennessee. So maybe we could hand these all out to the, all the students so they could wear them, and we'll let these people see them. And if you're from New York, that's a joke. That isn't appropriate. You know why? Because it's not age-appropriate. It's not illegal, it's age-inappropriate. Remember the word xenomelia? Not xenophobia, xenomelia. Xenomelia is a condition whereby a person, it's a real thing. In this case, say, a minor in the Sayerville School District wants to cut off their arm or leg or another perfectly good or working part of their own body. It's a real psychological condition, crazy. A kid says, "I really want to cut off my right leg," but guess what? No, you can't. You can't, kid. You can't do that. At the March Sayerville Board Meeting here, six of you voted to support xenomelia. Only three voted against it. People of Sayerville, I'm talking to you, there should have been a nine-to-zero vote to keep minor children from going anywhere near this path, a nine-to-zero vote to protect them. There wasn't. That was last year. For the parents of Sayerville watching this online or in the future, who was it who voted for xenomelia with our children in the March meeting? Three of them currently are up for reelection on November 4th. Lucy Bloom, Chris Callahan, Jeff Smith, you voted for 5756 to retain it in place. Your vote was, in fact, a vote on the side promoting xenophilia for Sayerville children. Why do you think they recently banned it in England? Vote out these incalculate incumbents. Vote for parent, parents' rights. Your first priority is to protect kids. If you voted for 5756, you did not vote for the safety of the kids. If you can't protect Sayerville kids and their parents' rights from Policy 5756, then you shouldn't be on the school board, no matter what your skill levels are in this, in the schools. It's time for an election. If you could save just one kid from taking this first step down the transgender minor mutilation road, then vote to rescind 5756. The school with, as long as it's in place, the school counseling path for your children. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else in public? Yes, no? Okay. Seeing none, we will close public. Any board members want to comment? Seeing none, take a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved. Second.